Welcome to the City Council meeting of the city of Lenore, Tuesday, March 20, 2018. We welcome you here this evening. We are going to get started in just a few minutes and we, as we always do at our council meetings, we will stand in a minute for a moment of silence and then we will remain standing for our pledge of allegiance to our country. Before we go to that, I would like to mention a couple of people we need to keep in our thoughts and prayers. We're missing Shirley Cannon tonight, our city clerk. Shirley is, has been ill this week, but also her husband Rex has been in the hospital and we want to keep Rex and Shirley in our thoughts and prayers. He is home now and hopefully is doing better and Shirley is feeling better too, but it's been a really rough couple of weeks for them as they've gone through several things. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers and we will continue praying for Todd Perdue's mom with, she is hopefully still doing okay and things are moving along and we will keep her in our thoughts and prayers as we continue. So if you would, please join us now for a moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge. Thank you. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we start a council meeting with a very special recognition. Someone who, two people actually, and more, who have done so many great things for our community and tonight, we would like to take a special time to honor Merlin and Judy Perry for what they have meant to our community and to tell them how much they have meant. Come up here, Merlin, Judy. Well, it is a pathway. We've got a special recognition for all for what you've meant to this city, what you've meant to pathways and all the things that you have done. And I'm going to read this resolution and then we're going to unveil this special thing right here in just a minute that will tell you why you're here this evening and why your son and all the grandson and all these people are here with you. Well, I don't know about bats, but anyway, let me read this proclamation to you and this is honoring Merlin and Judy Perry. Whereas Merlin and Judy Perry, residents of the city of Lenore, have been very active in service to the community and Caldwell County for many years. And whereas Merlin and Judy Perry in particular have been dedicated stewards for safe walking and biking trails in Caldwell County. And whereas in 2000, Merlin and Judy Perry were among a group of citizens that participated in a visioning process for bikeways, pathways, and multipurpose trails in Caldwell County convened under then-county Commissioner Ron Bean, who was with us this evening, which resulted in the creation of a master plan for pathways in Caldwell County. And whereas in 2001, the county commissioners appointed at 21-member committee called the Caldwell County Pathways with Merlin Perry as a founding member and the organization's first chair. And whereas since its inception in 2001, Merlin Perry has been an active member of the Caldwell County Pathways Board with his wife Judy Perry serving by his side in various key positions facilitating trail projects for 17 years. And whereas from 2005 to 2013, Merlin Perry served on the Lenore City Council where as an elected official, he continued his ardent support for trail development and active transportation in Caldwell County, serving as the city's representative on the MPO. And whereas Merlin Perry has continued to serve in advisory capacity to the Lenore City Council as a member of the Lenore Planning Board since January of 2015. And whereas Merlin Perry has participated in virtually every planning effort that related to sidewalks, bikeways, pathways, and greenways. Isn't that right, TJ?
Greenways.
The sidewalk man in Caldwell County for the past 20 years, including the causeful trail, the Lenore Pedestrian Plan, the Lenore Bicycle Plan, the Pathways Master Plan, and the Overmountain Victory National Historic Trail to Morganton, from Lenore to Morganton, Master Plan, as well as being a board member of Friends of Wilson Creek and the North Carolina Rails Trails Board. And whereas Merlin Perry was instrumental in the successful rail banking of a 3.9 corridor of discontinued rail right-of-way in 2016, successfully navigating the complex four-year process of establishing an interim trail use for the property through the Surface Transportation Board in Washington DC. And whereas through his work with Caldwell County Pathways, Merlin Perry has raised money, obtained easements, and advocated for approximately 10 miles of completed greenway projects in Caldwell County, including projects in Lenore, Hudson, and Happy Valley. And whereas Merlin's wife Judy Perry has actually participated in and supported Merlin in his steadfast dedication to the development of trails in Caldwell County, as well as being an active trail user herself. And whereas Merlin and Judy Perry can often be seen biking on the Lenore Greenway off of Powell Road, which is located in close proximity to their home. It's getting tough when you read all this. And now therefore, I, as mayor in official capacity as mayor of the city of Lenore and on behalf of the Lenore City Council and all citizens, do proudly proclaim that the big loop of the Lenore Greenway on Powell Road be officially named as the Perry Trail. We're very proud of you all. Thank you.
You so much.
So much.
You think we're going down?
No, we don't think so. No. We didn't think that at all, but we wanted to go ahead and do it while you could have still been born. And now you could ride on your very own trail. The Perry Trail.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bean, I know you would like to say something.
One of the commissioners that helped us get started with pathways.
Yes.
He had two other commissioners. And he's...
Rock, come on up.
He's the gator of this whole thing.
Yeah.
I've got something to say about you, buddy. Have we knocked on doors and all that?
Oh, yeah.
Rick had asked me if I'd say something about Merlin tonight and Judy and I said, "Okay." Here's, I wrote it down when I was going to say, "Merlin..." Get it all written on that piece of paper. But I did write some things down. Rick and I and Merlin and others way back in 2000 or before, we started talking about pathways and bikeways. And these two right here have really stuck with it and done the job. And I'm just proud to come and say a couple of comments. And I wrote it down and the reason I wrote it down, my wife says I have a tendency to ramble and I don't want to do that. But I want to say congratulations to Merlin and Judy for this honor being bestowed on you tonight by the city of Lenore. I don't think of anything any nicer than that. I've always said that the world needs more people with the integrity, the commitment, and purpose that you two have and that in itself would make this world a much better place to live. Now Merlin, before you get too high off the ground tonight with this honor, I'm going to push your head back in a little bit here. Before you get too high off the ground with this honor, I want to remind you of something and to inject a little bit of levity in what's going on here tonight. My wife always told me, and I want you to know this, that the best man for a job is a woman. If you've accomplished or I've accomplished, we owe it to our wives and they've done a good job. I want to say congratulations to both of you. It's a well-deserved honor. And I say that in all seriousness. You both have truly left a legacy for Lenore and Caldwell County. From Rick, I congratulate you.
Thank you.
From Pathways, we're just wanting to go ahead and present this little token of our appreciation. Thank you so much for all that you've done.
Where in the world?
I could say, but you know, the second half of that statement.
Thank you so much.
I think we've even missed not recognizing all the pathways, board members, people who support pathways back there. Have them stand up. We have passionate, present pathways members here.
Without Sam, we couldn't have done as much as we did.
Merlin?
And a lot of other people.
The podium is open for you.
Just say "time."
She said, "Just say time."
I just want to... The people that started this were the three commissioners and they got it started with Tony Deal and myself and Rick and some of the others, but it was Tony Deal and myself and Rick and the three commissioners that got us where we got to go to get pathways going as a 501(c)(3). And we worked on it for about, I think about a year before we ever got the 501(c)(3) part.
About 100 years.
Yeah, but anyway, it felt like 100 years, yeah. But we finally got that and that's what brought us on to make, able to do the things we've done. And the people of Lenore and Caldwell County and other counties have just helped everything they've done. And don't quit giving. Keep giving because we need that because we've got to finish this thing out. Thank you so much for everything.
This is Rick. We're going to shoot a picture with the sign and John, grandson, and the cats.
She's going first. All right, my turn. Look at me. And smile. Say, "One, two, three, trail." One, two, three. That's not right. That's not going to work. One, two, three, cheese. One, two, three, cheese. Awesome. I think I'm good.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations again. We're very proud of all of you. Thank you for what you do for our city. Rick, thank you. Rick is, by the way, the chairman of the Pathways Board and thank you for your hard work and all your board members that are with us this evening. You're welcome. We're welcome. Thank you for coming out. Honoring two fine people. We're going to go ahead. We've got to kind of move on our council meeting. Don't want to rush you, but thank you for being with us. And before we, before everyone gets gone, we would like to, last week, a number of us were in the town of Clayton, North Carolina, below Raleigh for the North Carolina Main Street, which we were very honored to be a part of. We were well represented. We had over 20 representatives from the city of Lenore there, including of course Kaylin Horn and Ty, our Main Street and Downtown Development Director Jenny Wheelock, our planning director was there, and many others. Many of our merchants went from downtown. Our Arts Council Director and just a number of people were so excited that so many people went. I hope they had a great time and got a lot out of it. But the highlight of it for us was the Main Street Champions Awards on Thursday morning. And tonight, we're here for a special recognition. You saw us take a picture early, but our fireman, our city of Lenore Fire Department was recognized as the Main Street Champions from the city of Lenore for 2018 and very honored. And I'm going to tell you, when those guys went down to receive their honor, they got the biggest cheer of anybody in the auditorium. Everybody, they loved it and we were well represented. Chief Hare, I'm going to ask you if you will come up and bring the award and talk about it a little bit and the team. You know, you guys do so many things for us and we do appreciate it every day. Not only do you protect us with fires and everything that you have to do, but you also, they come out and move tables and empty trash and just do whatever's needed and never complain one time. And we appreciate it. I know our Main Street volunteers love you guys. They have you on speed dial. They are always excited when you come. And thank you for being there. Chief Hare was there and Chief Nelson, and I'll let you talk about the experience down there. But it was a great honor and we're very proud of it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, myself and Chief Nelson, Scott Brawley, and Cody McCary, that was our honor to go on behalf of our department in this city to accept this award for what actually the firefighters do. We can't, the greatest honor is these firefighters being recognized for the service and dedication that they have for this city, not only fighting fires, but you know, it's like it was said at our reception, when we go to help, they ask, "What can we do next?" So it was a great honor for that. But I do want to thank the nominating committee for allowing us to get this recognition on behalf of our firefighters and especially want to thank the firefighters for all they do, but especially want to thank you guys for allowing our department and our members to be who we are for this community and the citizens that we serve. It was a great honor in Clayton to get this, just like the mayor said, that was overwhelming for our people that represent us, the ovation that we did get, and it was truly inspirational to me on behalf of these guys. So just want to say thank you for allowing us to be who we are. Thank you so much.
Thank you, chief. Thank you guys for coming out tonight. We do appreciate that. Welcome to stay if you'd like, but if you've got some time off, we know you might not want to listen to a council meeting, but you're welcome always to be here with us. So thank you very much for that. We'll move on then to our agenda to its matter scheduled for public hearing this evening. We have a rezoning. This is southeast corner of Elizabeth Street and Valmead Street. We're holding this hearing to consider a rezoning request for property located at southeast corner of Elizabeth Street and Valmead Street, west of Valmead Elementary School, North Carolina pin number 284-074-7741, to be rezoned from R9 multifamily residential to I2 heavy industrial in order to house a Caldwell County EMS base. The planning board and the city staff recommend approval of the rezoning and adoption of the following consistency statement. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted conferency plan because it facilitates the provision of a public service facility to support future growth in an area that is already served by existing infrastructure. The proposed amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it allows for construction of an EMS base in an industrial zone property while maintaining requirements for adequate buffering and setbacks to surrounding residential properties. I'll now open the public hearing and if there's anyone who would like to address the council, please do so at this time. I see our planning director Jenny Wheelock coming forward. Jenny, if you would.
Good evening. I've got Hannah Williams as the project planner. She's in the audience. If you've got technical questions about the rezoning, she can answer them. I've got the applicant here in the audience too. It's a pretty simple request. The property is vacant today. It was purchased by Caldwell County. It's got residential zoning. There's a handful of zoning districts that we could have rezoned it to, to accommodate the EMS base. It's adjacent to heavy industrial and that's why we went with that. Typically, we probably wouldn't extend a heavy industrial district out like this, but it's contiguous. It meets good planning principles. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. Otherwise, I'll open the floor to whoever. Thanks.
Are anyone else? Is there anyone else who would like to address the council while we have the public hearing open? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for any discussion and/or motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from council member Roar to approve the rezoning request as presented for the property as described. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Carriage unanimously. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Stan Dino, for being with us this evening. All right, we will move on then to consent agenda items, which tonight consist of minutes of the city council meeting of Tuesday, March 6, 2018, and minutes of our committee of the whole meeting of Tuesday, February 27, 2018. Anyone want to discuss anything or I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from council member Perdue to approve the consent agenda items as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Carriage unanimously. We'll move on then to our, on our agenda for any requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone here that would like to address the council, this is the time to do so on our agenda. And seeing no one, then we'll move on to reports of our boards and commissions. And tonight, Mr. Rick Oxford, our planning administrator from the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, is here to hold the first of two public meetings to receive public comments regarding the proposed FY 2018 action plan of the city of Lenore and the Unifor Home Consortium as part of the five-year consolidated plan. This plan, as required by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, outlines goals and actions plans for the city of Lenore, of the city of Lenore and the Unifor Home Consortium and its use of the Community Development Block Grant, CBDG, and home funds for fiscal year 2018, beginning July 1 and ending July 30, 2019. City of Lenore serves as the lead entity for the Unifor Consortium. Mr. Oxford, welcome.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. You say everything I need to say.
Well, I was trying to help you out.
Opening monologue there. Okay, well, I guess, let me just talk about hypothetical numbers because we don't have any real numbers yet. So based on what we received last year, we anticipate that the home program, which the city of Lenore is the lead entity of, it is a four-county-wide program that its major activity is down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers. We also fund multifamily housing projects and we also fund community development housing organizations such as Habitat for Humanity. Last year, we received approximately $980,000. Well, I take that back. We received about $749,000 and about $230,000 worth of program income for a total of about $980,000. And that money was spent on down payment assistance. About $457,000 was spent on down payment assistance. About $112,000 was spent on the home, CHODOS, the community housing development organizations. And about $335,000 was spent on multifamily housing and about 74 for administration. I don't know how much money we will receive. So I think our budget will be similar. We may have a reduction in the amount going toward multifamily housing. That sort of depends on the applications that we receive. And right now, we do have money available for those, so it might be that that's reduced. And if that's reduced, then our available budget for down payment assistance has increased. Any questions about the home program?
Any questions?
We, I would say, we have assisted close to 3,000 first-time homebuyers throughout the four counties since this program started.
Any idea on how many in the city of Lenore?
Probably about, oh, in the city of Lenore, that's tricky. About a quarter of them, I would say, would be in Caldwell County. City of Lenore, I'd have to get more.
You'll have another meeting to find that?
Right.
That's right.
Nothing says spring like Rick Oxford. Okay, I'm starting to sweat now. All right, any questions?
Any other questions for Rick?
Home program? Okay. With the CDBG, we're anticipating that the program will receive about $132,000, which is similar to what we got last year. And I've been working with the planning department and with the manager and we're looking at putting about $106,000 toward the greenway. And somewhat broader, we would say that money could be used for design survey, engineering, construction, crosswalks, paving, signage for neighborhoods, signage for the greenway. Good. Okay? The remainder would go toward administration.
You were waiting for that.
Like when we wrote one check a year and 10% of the money went to administration.
That's all we do. Any questions about the CDBG?
Any question?
I'm going to save them all for next month.
Oh, good. And I'm going to try to wait till we find out definite numbers before I schedule our next public meeting, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Okay, thank you.
Glad to have you with us tonight. Okay, before we move on to the report from the city manager, I would like to notify the council of the, we have received the certificate of achievement, the highest form of recognition from the excellence from the Government Finance Officers Association. We're very honored to have that. I'd like to say thank you to Donna Bean, our finance director, and all of her fine staff for their hard work and what you're doing. This is over 30 years in a row. This is over 30 years in a row, I think, that we have received this achievement. Press release that came out from the Government Finance Officers Association and, of course, a letter and a certificate thanking us for our hard work on that. Thank you for what you do and continue to keep up the good work. Save money wherever you can. We appreciate it. It was a great, great honor. And 30 years in a row is really a great honor, so thank you. We'll move on then to report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hillbrand.
Mayor, council, several items for information tonight. The planning board will meet on Monday, March 26 at 5:30. That's correct. The annual employee recognition banquet will be held on Monday, March 26 at 6:00 PM. That'll be held at the J. Hugh Brohlhill Civic Center. The committee of the whole will meet on Tuesday, March 27, City Hall, third floor. That'll be held at 8:30 in the morning and that will be your budget meeting as well. Also, the Foothills Regional Airport Authority will meet on Wednesday, March 28.
That's actually been changed to the first one in April, April 4.
April 4.
We had a conflict with it.
At the Foothills.
And then also, city offices will be closed on Friday, March 30, and observance of Good
Friday. And that's your items for information. Tonight, you have one item for action, the Lenore Bicycle Plan. As you recall, over the past year, we've been working through NCDOT and our consulting firm, Kimmely Horn, to go back, and also, we have a locally appointed committee to go back and develop a bicycle plan for the community. And I think Ms. Wheelock, our plan director, is gonna go back and hit some of the highlights of that. But we're looking at policy programs, infrastructure improvements to promote safe biking in our community. And I think there's 12 recommendations from that study she wants to highlight.
And you let Mr. Perry get out of here before he got to clear all this stuff.
They all went to go ride bikes.
Mr. Perry probably could've given this presentation. I actually, I do not have a presentation prepared. I just wanted to put this slide up for folks who are watching at home or anybody who's hearing about the bike plan for the first time. When we did our retreat, the planning retreat, what, six weeks ago, I presented on more detail. The projects up here are the top 12 that came out of the planning process. We did extensive public input, both online and at some community meetings, plus the steering committee, some targeted interviews with some focus groups. Most of the recommendations relate to connecting planned and existing Greenway facilities with on-street infrastructure. So where we can put maybe a bike lane on a street to connect a path from a neighborhood to a Greenway, things like that, in the areas that people are traveling the most. Happy to answer any questions. This went to planning board last month. They endorsed it. We are already looking at where we can, you know, implement some of these at low costs and within existing projects. And I think Kimmely Horn did a really good job with this plan. It's available online, cityoflenore.com/planing. Anybody that's interested in reviewing the entire plan document, looking at recommended projects, my contact information's on that website as well. People are more than welcome to get in touch with me for more information. And I just asked that you adopt it tonight.
The only question I have is, what is the effect of adopting this? What does this do?
Mostly, it's going to help us in grant applications if we are going to be applying for.
Private and public grants, both, I'm sure.
The fact that the planning's been done gives staff a roadmap. If this is something council endorses, it helps us know where we're heading as we look project by project, make sure that those things are included. But the official adoption, it does. It helps me on grant applications.
Okay, any other questions?
No, and I think based on our first planning session for the budget, that we saw that this has kind of risen to the top as being just a tremendous opportunity to tie everything together. And I think a lot of it's low-hanging fruit that we can really tap into this year and see immediate results. So I'm excited about this.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm making a motion. We approve this.
Sort of say, you're gonna make a motion with it?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Mayor Pro Tim Willis to adopt the Lenore Bicycle Plan as presented. And as we have seen over the last few months, as it has been put in place, we did discuss this at the plan, our budget retreat and number of things, so moving along very well. We appreciate all the hard work that you and your committee have put in on this. Anyway, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Carrie's announced. Okay, anything else?
That's all, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Blair.
Okay. I do have a couple of recommendations to make for reappointments. We discussed this, announced these and brought them out at our February 20 meeting of the city council, but we'll bring these up and if all right, I'll just present them together. Planning Board, Mr. Tim Scobie for a four-year term. Lenore Tourism Development Authority, Dr. Dana Clark and Glenda Wilson for four-year terms. The Lenore Business Advisory Board, Therese Onquist for a two-year term. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Scott Barnett and Mr. Eric Robinowitz for two-year terms on that. So I would make that as a recommendation for those, these are reappointments to these boards.
Make a motion, we approve.
We have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Willis to approve the, those presented for reappointment as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Carrie's announced. Yeah, we'll have some more over the next few meetings, anyway. Would announce one more. The Recreation Board, Mr. Lemuel Patterson actually resigned from that board, signing some health things and others. So we will have an opening on our Recreation Board and we will be, we'll put that out for our advertisement and let people know there is a seat open on that. And we'll be talking further about that as we look into it. I talked to Mr. Story about that today. And we also have one, we have a student who serves on that board and we're getting some recommendations for a young man to come on that board. And I think we'll have that in place at our next meeting. Fine young man who has shown real interest in wanting to be a part of that, of that board. And we've always had a student be a part of that. So we'll make those recommendations at a later time. Any other recommendations or reports from our council members?
Just real quick, Mr. Hillbrand and I have just got back last week from Washington, DC to represent the council in the city of Lenore at the National League of Cities. It was a great event. We got to, I guess, lobby with the North Carolina League with Senator Burr and Mark Meadows, our House Representatives, and talked about all the good things that we're doing here in Lenore. And they missed you, Mayor. They really did.
Thank you.
Also, I would mention they missed Mr. Roar. I sat in his committee.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, they did. No, they really did.
They missed me.
They really did. Mr. Roar serves on the Finance and Administration Committee and I sat in on that and they did commend you, so I want to pass that along to you publicly.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep. The, a couple, just a quick, couple of things I said on the Information Technology and the Communications Board, and it's kind of, kind of interesting to see a 20,000-foot level of what's going on in DC about how it comes to infrastructure and things of that nature that deal with telecoms. And 5G is a big, is a big, big push that's gonna be happening in the next couple of years. So when 5G comes, it's really gonna revolutionize and be a game changer for how this country operates. And you're gonna start seeing a lot of smart city applications and stuff being, being, being pushed through that comes along. You're hearing a lot of stuff coming from the Hill about streamlining the process when it comes to federal government and grants. And what a big word that we heard in every session was preemption. So when they say streamline, you don't want that to mean preemption. And what they're gonna do is basically take away all of our rights to be able to make the rules for ourselves locally. And they're gonna say, if you want it to be quick, this is where it's gonna be, and they're gonna cram it down their throats. So you gotta be very careful about when they talk about that. And the league is very aware of that and are trying to kind of make sure that they go slow and steady when it comes to this type of thing. Streamlining doesn't necessarily mean good things for us. That being said, they also, we talked to Senator Burr and Meadows about the spend, the bill that's due Friday, I believe, the budget. And they were talking about infrastructure as being a part of that. They were like, you're not gonna see much of anything, but there's gonna be a lot of stuff crammed into that bill. And from the IT, from the infrastructure side, they were saying a lot of telecom, a lot of fiber, a lot of that type of thing may be plugged into that, but there's gonna be a lot of, I guess, a lot of fat in that bill that they don't know. A lot of people aren't gonna be happy with that. Small cell deployment was also a big deal about how with that preemption, the North Carolina League of Municipalities has got a really good idea of what to do with that. Maps about how to mark where we have Wi-Fi service for kids and especially low-income folks who may not have Wi-Fi or internet access at home. We can create a map locally in the city of Lenore. Like if McDonald's has a Wi-Fi, you could use that as a hotspot. And if you could map all of those areas in the city of Lenore, you could have these hubs, these like smart centers where people that may not be able to afford to have free access, even at places that offer it just as a service for that. Mr. Hillbrand and I also had many discussions in the airport about getting our youth involved more, not necessarily from a political level, but even though that's okay, that would be good. But getting, I sat with several groups that brought a lot of youth, and I think we have very talented youth that need to be involved and active in local government, not just from an elected position side, but as a profession. They don't understand that all these jobs that you guys do are in every field. They're in IT, they're in marketing, they're in planning, they're in engineering, at everything. And they don't see local government as an option for employment. And so it's more than just getting them involved in the political side of it. It's more of almost like a workforce development type of thing. And I think when you tie that together, it makes a youth council look a little bit different. I think everybody's approaching it as, well, you're gonna be an elected official. Well, that's, that's fine, but I think if you look at it a bit, at a broader plan, people can see all the great opportunities there are at every level of government. And so that, I hope we continue that conversation. And Mayor, that was a big thing on your radar, too. I'd like to continue that conversation.
We have some groups at the high schools that are very interested and we need to keep cultivating that. I contact them periodic basis, trying to, how are we coming with it? Would you like to set something forward? We wanna make sure it's gonna work, but don't want it to start and then fail real quick.
No, no, and I've got some ideas. I'd love to talk. Willis has a couple of ideas, the crawl, walk, run scenario.
Yeah, that'd be great. That's what we need.
And again, thank you guys and the city for allowing me to go and represent you guys. And again, thank you for the work. And if anybody ever has any questions or anything about anything else, I'd be happy to discuss it with you.
And a quick follow-up, just a little bit of more on the Main Street. Also, it was a great, really great conference. A lot of our downtown merchants came back really excited, and I think that's a good thing. We're seeing some more new things that are, looks like are getting ready to open in downtown again and in our whole general area, of course, but I know we concentrate a lot on downtown when you're at the Main Street conferences there. And that went very well. It was well-attended and a lot of people had some great ideas, were really good sessions that we all broke up and went into different groups. And I think we covered every single one of them with our people. So we came back with a lot of great, great information from that. Quickly, the end, April is right around the corner. Cruisin' start next month. Gravity Games is next month. We got a lot of things coming up in Lenore as April approaches and it's, it's that time of year. Spring is here and it doesn't feel like it right now, but it's right around the corner, so I know there's a lot of really good things going on. Last night, we attended a thing in Hickory with UNCTV and it, they're in this area doing some things, looking at us. We gave them quite a bit of information about us in Lenore. Josh is going to contact them and talk to them about some things there with our art, especially in our sculpture and all the thing. We're asking a lot about that from our centerpiece and others, so hopefully that will, that will help some things, too. So any, yes, yes, sir. Easter egg hunts is Saturday. Okay.
What is the dates for your litter-free LITRC?
April 14 through 28.
Okay, we'll get some more publicity out about that.
There's a city, city work day, what, the 16th? Is that right?
Yeah, Monday, April 16. We plan to have a group of city volunteers.
Okay. Anything else? Lisa doing good?
Generally trending upward, ups and downs, but she's generally doing better. Thank you for asking.
Yes, sir. We're still thinking about her.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep. So anyone else? Okay, not, we stand adjourned. Thank y'all for being with us.